Haven't had to buy any fancy.
Hey, how are you? It's good.
How are you? At the big table? You complain?
Oh, come on, complain. Come on.
Who, me? They listen to you? No, I'm good, I'm just trying to get Dean's face. They think I'm gonna beat 'em, they keep looking at me.
Yeah, my dogs don't listen to me, yeah, I accept their food.
They're looking at me like, "Come on, the chicken's right over there." "I'll show ya."
Wingin.
Yeah.
Mr. Gross, how are you?
Now we're meeting. You gotta be seated. Okay, ready, Wendy?
Ready when you are.
Okay, we're gonna do this both, then I'll call the meeting order from the City Council side.
And I'll call the meeting order from the Traffic Commission.
We have a roll call, please.
City Council, we have Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrand.
Here.
Traffic Commission Chair Hill.
Here.
Vice Chair Pats.
Here.
Commissioner Coxhill. Absent. Commissioner Mejia.
Here.
Commissioner Rodman.
Here.
Commissioner Singer.
Here.
And Commissioner West.
So Chair Hill, if I may, I'll go ahead and introduce the special order of the day, which is the City Council and Traffic Commission workshop. And I think, do we need a report, or do you want to...
We can, between Les and I, we'll just give a very brief introduction. This item was brought forward at the request of the City Council to have a joint Traffic Commission and City Council meeting to discuss issues in common. And I am going to turn it over to Les to talk about, to drill down a little bit more and get the discussion started. So Les Johnson, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Brett. Mayor, council members, commission members. I know that this has been an item that I believe Council has been asking for a while to have regular meetings with, with the commissions. And so even though tonight, there's really one primary focus, I think this interest here is to be able to have dialogue between the commission and, and City Council, and hopefully this will happen maybe on a regular basis going forward. But tonight specifically, the matter that I believe brought this, this to be agendaized is having to do with the residential parking permit procedures and the review process, and what transpired over the last, past two years, I believe. Back in late seventeen, the Traffic Commission began a process of sequentially going through each of the five existing residential parking programs that exist in the city. And again, those five are Old Town East, Old Town West, New Dutch, Carrier Row, and the Greenbrook Woodcrest neighborhoods. They went through a process of considering those individual programs. There was notice provided, hearings, and an opportunity for the commission to receive feedback. And as a result of that, back in February, on February nineteenth, staff provided a report to the council with regards to the recommendations that came forward from, from the commission. As a result of that, there was, the council essentially went with the recommendations of the commission with the exception to the New Dutch neighborhood. They had recommended that that neighborhood program conclude. And as I recall, council had instructed back to the commission for reconsider, to keep the New Dutch neighborhood program existing right now, to reconsider possibly expanding that neighborhood as well as the Carrier Row neighborhood boundaries. Both of those boundaries did not include the entire neighborhood itself, it's certain streets within those neighborhoods. And that information was coming back to the commission, and then that resulted, I guess, in the need to bring the parties together to talk more about, again, about what has transpired with that. So I'll, I'll conclude with that. Obviously, from a staff standpoint, we're happy to answer any questions you have, but I'll leave it to the council commission at this point.
All right. So to the council, any comments, questions that we want to start off with? And then I'll turn it over to Randy, so, on our end. And Chair Hill, I think it'll probably be more free form, and so maybe we'll do a couple rounds of comments, if you don't mind, but I know there's a lot of issues probably that you want to bring up on your end from the traffic, so I know, because you appear for the council, some of you, and had asked for this meeting as well, so I'm gonna ask, any questions?
Sure, well, comment, please.
Please, Mayor Pro Tem.
Just a couple thoughts. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for what you do. I sat in those chairs years ago. Be careful, you could get stuck in this chair if anybody talks to you, so. But, you know, it's important work. I know you got overturned on the last one, and I think it caused some heartache. But, you know, it's, I want to show you how obvious it is that we haven't always had a good Traffic Commission here. Because here we are, a little city of 2.2 miles, we've got three Cherry Streets, we've got three Reagan Streets, we've got three Pine Streets, and two neighborhoods out of sixteen named Dutch. So, not too much imagination in the past here. So, we're glad you're here, and we'll work out whatever we need to here.
Thank you. Your pro tem? Anybody else?
So I want to kind of echo some of those with what Richard said. I was also on the Traffic Commission. And I know you have been given a task to look at the, the parking permit process. And I am in favor of this regular review, and see if we still need that, the sunsetting of that. And I know that there were decisions made that may come into question, so want to hear what the, you know, the feedback is, and how we can work better together, make sure that we've, excuse me, we've charged you with a, a task, and serving, of course, the community that we're all interested in, and see where we can do better. So with that, Chair Hill, turn it over to you.
Well, so, first of all, Mayor Kusamoto, you know, I tend to have a sense of humor, and is this an appropriate place for them, or is this not appropriate?
It's appropriate.
Absolutely appropriate.
License is good.
So I want you to know that that's, that is who I am. So, okay. So, it's pretty broad at this moment. So I guess the first thing I would say is that, I don't know of anybody that was put off by the concept of being rejected. I think when we propose something, we all understand that we're doing it at your request and at your service, and that you have the right to either agree or not agree with whatever we send forth. And we do so without our personal feelings involved, but based on the information we have in, based on the outreach we make to the community and the support we get from your staff. So, to me, I don't understand why we, why at the City Council meeting where this was brought up, why it wasn't just rejected, as opposed to belittle, right, publicly demean, right? I think those would be the things that we would say are maybe concerns. The actual mechanics of whether you adopt or not what we recommend, that's on you. And I don't think we really understand why you didn't just adopt or reject, and move on.
Good question. So, wanna go around the rest, or you want to just seek discussion?
That's fine.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, and my fellow commissions. There were several items that came up that we thought needed to be addressed. First of them is the commission's recommendation to eliminate the New Dutch Haven parking permit program, which Chair Hill mentioned. The potential for the Carrier Row permit parking program to include more streets. And quite frankly, we didn't believe that we had the authority to do that. That's something that has to be changed and/or approved by the City Council, because we can only make a recommendation, but we can't make those sorts of changes. The third item was New Dutch Haven and Carrier Row being treated as a whole versus two individual areas. I think that also came up. I watched the online video, and that's where I drew the ideas and the comments that I'm making at this time. And the fourth item was whether Marion Street and the Greenbrook track is part of the permit parking program or not. And again, that goes back to what I mentioned a few moments ago, that we don't believe that we have the authority to include or exclude a, an existing item within the parking program. Again, we can only make a recommendation, and it's up to the council to either approve, disapprove, make a new, I forget the name of what it's called, but the way the parking permit program is put into effect, is it a proclamation or a resolution? You have the ability to make the new resolution to make those kinds of changes. Thank you.
I have a 100% agreement with Randy's assessment. When I watched the video and the way that they were criticized in public, I think that maybe that should have been something that could have been done offline, and maybe before for this year to provide our recommendations. If you're not in agreement with them, then you can accept or deny them.
I agree with all the commission members. I think one of the things that was going wrong when, after we heard the City Council talking about it, I think something that made us a little bit apprehensive, or, or think more about it, was that comments from folks on the City Council who were, I believe, residents of those particular neighborhoods were heard. And I, I'm not sure that if the decision was based on those two comments by those folks who lived in the City Council, folks who lived in those neighborhoods, or based on the comments that we received from residents, from other residents, through the, through the neighbor process.
May I have one other thought? When, when we voted on the different areas, the people who lived in those impacted areas refused themselves. And I think that was a great problem.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for the input. So back here to the council, looking for comments, and maybe more questions if, however we want to proceed, okay? So.
Okay, so I'll start with that. I know the meeting you watched, and those comments came out of my mouth. And I know that, and I, I spoke without filter and with a lot of emotion. I had no intention of belittling or demeaning anybody. And if it was taken that way, I apologize, I also watched the meeting, and that's exactly how I would have taken it as well. And I never, ever want to come across that way. That came out of a weekend of frustration of being hit by a lot of residents who probably didn't participate in the process, but all of a sudden showed up at my front door with phone calls and personal visits and everything else. When I started digging in through it, that is my neighborhood, I live in Carrier Row, I live a street over from Lexington. I remember when the permit program started, back in, I think, 2004. It was introduced, we all got our stickers, we all got our visitor placards, and then it was never enforced. At the time, I didn't under, I assumed, bad thing to do, that all of Carrier Row was part of the permit program. So, when I dug into it a little bit more and realized that Lexington wasn't part of the permit program, or Howard, which is the two most impacted areas on the base level, on the, on the west part of Carrier Row, and those are the neighbors that were contacting me about not being able to park in front of their houses on the weekends because they've upped the, the drill weekends to every other weekend now, so, and a lot of the, the base has addressed their parking issue, they have plenty of parking. The reservists choose not to want to get in line on Lexington to get onto the base, it's much easier for them to park on Howard, on Lexington, on some of the other streets. And it impacts weekend parking for neighbors if they want to have parties, or birthday parties, or however. And then when I saw that New Dutch was going to be excluded, and with the construction that's going on across the street, and I've been told by a number of people that they are encouraging either employees of the new construction over there for the assisted living facility, or visitors for the housing project over there, that there is not enough parking, so they are encouraging those employees and those visitors to park across the street in our neighborhood. And I've gotten emails from people saying, "Please do away with your permit program so we can park there when we go visit our friends and our parents in Cypress." It's a very, that group over there is very vocal. I wouldn't say active, but they're vocal. And my, my comments were pure out of emotion, and I apologize, I probably should have done it better. I, I wasn't sure the avenue to communicate the frustration, probably should have contacted Randy. In fact, not probably, I should have contacted Randy and said, "Hey, here's what's going on, how do you want me to address this at council? How can we bring this to the Traffic Commission to make a consistent plan of either do the permit program or not do the permit program, but not do one street and not do another street? Because those two neighborhoods are one continuous neighborhood. There's no border that says, "Welcome to New Dutch." Howard runs through both neighborhoods, so the first part of Howard, that's Carrier Row, so is that permit, and then New Dutch is not? How does it split up? How do we communicate to the people? The people that have lived there for the past 20 years have known about this permit program, and all the signs up, and it's never been enforced. The other thing that happened is, the day after your meeting, or two days after your meeting, everybody started getting warning citations on their windshields for all their cars parked on the street. My husband got one. Well, the sticker that we got in 2004 is probably five cars ago. So we didn't have a sticker, and it wasn't a ticket, but it was a warning citation that you had to contact the police department to fix it. So I was concerned that now all these neighbors are getting these warning citations, and they have no way of knowing to fix it, they're not aware of the program, and all of a sudden we're starting to enforce a program that hasn't been enforced for 15 years. So there was just a lot going on. And like I say, I can't apologize enough for how I came off, my snarkiness, my unfiltered emotion. It shouldn't have been done from the dais. What I, what I would like to do is, you know, we do need to do a better job of being able to have a conduit to be able to communicate between the Traffic Commission and the council the same way that the Planning Commission communicates with us. One of the things, you know, we're encouraged not to necessarily show up at commission meetings, so you guys can do your work. So he, we hear about the decisions after the fact. With Traffic Commission, because it's not televised, we don't get to see it, we get to see a condensed version of the minutes a few weeks later. Some of the dishes have already been implemented. You know, I'd like to recommend that we start recording. The Traffic Commission's, I found out today that it's $165 a session to record it, I think that's money well spent. And we are now, as a city, starting to rely more on video minutes than the actual written minutes. And I think traffic is a very hot topic in Los Alamos, probably more so than planning. And with all the construction going on in our city and around our city, I think that the more transparent that the Traffic Commission is, the better. People tend to get more upset about traffic than they do about planning. And so I would like to see that. And just open to any kind of suggestions. I know with staff, the day after the Planning Commission, they send us a memo about decisions that were made, and we have that the next day. I'd like to recommend to do the same thing with traffic, so we're immediately known of what decisions were made, and if anything's a red flag, then we can bring it up with staff and ask for the logic or the clarification, and things like that. So, just some, some baby steps, including huge behavior modification on my part, and maybe less snarkiness and more communication from my part, too.
Well, you can be a snarky shawt to me, but I prefer you not to do it on purpose.
Right, and, and that's where I didn't divide the line.
If I, if I may add something. We actually just received brand-new information from you tonight. The fact you have received this many concerned citizens' calls and information about wanting to park in that area, we had no idea. Had we had that information, perhaps the decision would have been different.
And, and that's where I think, and, and that came after the decision. That came after your, your, your meeting. It was, I believe it was communicated to staff, so now how does that get back to the Traffic Commission? I, I think we just need a better conduit of being able to communicate with each other without any, I don't know, violations and all the regulations that you have to go through anyway. But there has to be, traffic is such a hot topic in the city, we've got to have a better way of making sure we're all on the same page, making sure that any recommendations are consistent with kind of the overall master plan of the city. And so we don't come back and say, "Traffic Commission, you, you really missed the boat on that one, because that, that appeared, that, that looked bad." Anyway, that's, I'll go further.
The Traffic Commission, they didn't just show up and make a decision of, "No, we're not going to grant parking to this." They sent out flyers, they sent out survey monkeys, they've asked people to reach out to the community. So I would like your recommendations on what you feel we should do to better enhance what we're already doing. Because we felt that we were doing the things that were necessary to outreach to the community. So the community has some responsibility in responding before decisions are made, in my opinion. So I'd like to get your recommendations.
By me. So, thanks, Tony. So, you know, in the nine years I've served, I know that we've had several surveys that were very, very important, and it's really hard to get responses, it just really is. So I appreciate all that the commission has done to outreach and, and get those. I know that I would look to Les, and even his predecessor, they would go out with mailings and door, door hangers and, and everything they can. So it's kind of, it's kind of tough to do when people are content with, or, you know, somewhat content with their lives. And, you know, you give them something they're going to be fired up about, then they're out there in droves. So I, just, you gotta do what you're doing, and we just kind of trust, we have to trust, you know, your assessment of, of the information that you take in. And I think, I guess, unless counsel's other question, I wanted to say, you know, I will take it as my responsibility for having, you know, moderating that meeting up there, that I should have controlled it better. And I think that, you know, the courage you all had to speak in front of us and air the grievance, I think this is a great opportunity, as, as Les said, that, you know, we've, we've asked for these joint meetings, and some of it is, you know, we'd like to have this, but we really should just make it a regular thing. But we're all busy, and it's tough, tough to line up all these schedules, but this is, I think, just, you know, in all of the difficulty that you all, you know, have gone through, I think this is that opportunity to recalibrate, to, to look forward to how we do things better, and how we keep those lines of communication open. In, in my tenure of, of having served two terms and this partial year, we've never had a joint meeting between the council and the commission, the Traffic Commission. We've done it with the Planning Commission, I think, just maybe twice? And so, as Les said, this is something we ought to do, and we ought to just put on calendar and have that, again, that, that calibration, and Randy, you know, humor is always appreciated, right? Something like this, you know, because we're not adversaries, we're not, we're not across the table from that, we're actually, you know, you are, yeah, serving at our pleasure, but you are our eyes and ears, and we need to, you know, when we sit up there, we're getting all kinds of barbs and, you know, spears directed at us. So sometimes we get a little snarky, so. And it was never meant to be against you all, right? So we're just trying to, like, like you're just trying to do the best we can with, with our experiences. But Tony, you just have to kind of keep doing what you're doing, and, you know, make your decisions based on your best assessment, as, when we ask you that, when you want to serve, right? Go with unbiased opinion, you know, look for the best of our community, that's all we can ask of you. That's all we're trying to do here, from the, from the dais as well, from the elected office. I'll open up to my colleagues. By me.
You know, I think, Randy, you and Vice Chair Pats hit the nail on the head. And you don't have the value of an attorney at your meetings where planning and the council does. But you're right, you can't just arbitrarily decide you're going to put parking on Marion, permits on Marion, or put permits in other streets. There's a process, and you guys work that process out, and it requires those people to come forward and submit petitions, and then it's aired and viewed. So you didn't do anything wrong. I think in, in my case, and, and I can pretty much guess, but in my case, I'm in Old Town West, and I'm in a permit area, and I never got a letter, a hang tag, or anything else, because I would have responded to it. But I'm on the very south end of it, and it really affects only one day, which is Sunday. Now, across the street is permit. Those permits were put into place because of Cottonwood. Cottonwood's gone. Is it still the same issue in the community? And I would have to assume the questionnaires you, you put out got that feedback that said, "Yes, let's just leave it alone." And we've got new developments going in on the very northern end of Old Town West with the 50 condos, and soon the 108 apartments. The good thing is the apartments, the stipulations that were put in on that, they cannot park on the street, and they're not going to get parking permits. But there's more parking on-site for those apartments than's required. And so it shouldn't be an issue with them. It could be with the, with the condos, we'll only know that when, when they get built and sold and people moved into them. But I personally appreciate the work that you guys do, and I think your views in terms of, of what you could and couldn't do were right on. I agree with the mayor, we tend to get more people that want to come and yak because they're on TV, so maybe you don't want to be on TV. And...
Not me.
Well, we can take a vote right now, so. But, you know, I think you guys are doing a good job. I, I agree, we need to have better lines of communication, because I can remember also having served on the Planning Commission, wondering what the council's thoughts are, why they acted the way they did. So good dialogue like this is healthy, and, and appreciated from my perspective, and I'm sure really from the rest of them. So you're, you're spot on on what you're doing.
I, I just have a couple of quick comments. One of the things that made this process difficult, and I have lived in this city for 25 years, is that when we looked at this, this item, and the response that we got, and knowing that it had relatively gone unnoticed.
Noticed.
Noticed, for years, right? And so that starts to lend to an issue, because if, you know, you, the responses, we got a lot of responses that said, "We'd like signs, but we don't want any enforcement," you know, that, you know. And so in speaking with, with Les, or with the police, you know what I mean, and them wanting to enforce this item, and if... enforce this item, and if that's the direction we're going to go, knowing that there's going to be pushback immediately, the second that those warning signs go up, you can't put a warning that warning signs are going up, they just go up. And that's, you know, there were, we went round and round with different ideas, how do we get response? And with the limited response that we get, we absolutely could not ignore them. We had to take them, because that's what we asked for. And so we did go quite a bit back and forth. Obviously, we started this process on August the 9th of 2017, and here we are almost two years later. And knowing that the review process that is, we're charged with, actually, it's every three years now is what we're supposed to do. So knowing that that's coming again right on the heels of what we have been doing now, thinking, okay, well, if we make any small recommendations now, we can see what the impact is, and then decide, you know, as we go forward, you know, with your recommendation, of course, how things go moving forward in the years to come. Because during the course of this process, we had other people coming forward in the community wanting to initiate new areas as we're going. So if we were telling them, "You need to do the, get your petition, do this, go through the process, and then have that as a ready so that at the conclusion of this, we can, you know, balance it out." So I, those things made it difficult, the lack of response, you know, really, although we did take into consideration everyone, but some of the responses from even a single person were, "Keep it, okay, that we got," it was unbalanced, and so that was, that made it difficult. But I think the fact that it was pretty much gone unenforced for so long, that's probably what made it the hardest, I think, on this item.
I just wanted to back up what Commissioner said. I think it was very frustrating to have people in the same questionnaire say, "Keep it as it is, but we want to change it," or, you know, "I didn't know we had one." And I think the fact that we don't enforce it more, I think that is part of the problem because people will say, "I lived here 13 years, I didn't know we had a parking permit program." So I think that's part of the program, part of the problem, too. That's all.
(noise)
I think we need to, it's good that we're talking about this now because it's only going to become bigger with the hotel and with state regulations saying everybody can have a little place in the backyard and rent it out or do whatever they want to do with it. So I think every neighborhood is going to be impacted in the next two, three, five, seven, eight years. And we probably should, this is good that we're talking about now, to get a handle on the best practices and to see what other cities are doing in this kind of situation.
So if I may. We didn't change the parking in Old Town West because of the new developments. At this point, we didn't think it needed it, but we weren't sure what the impact was going to look like, and we didn't want to have to go back and revisit it if we had made a mistake. I think it's really a great idea to have us involved or at least aware of the general plan, and I think that has to be more than just sending us a 200-page document. As far as the communication, you know, I did reach out when we went into an area where I knew a council member lived, and I asked. And that was one of the hard things, was I asked and I got a response, and then at the city council meeting, it was 180 degrees different. As far as the base site impact on Carrier Row, not one person said anything about that. We never, the only person we ever heard that from was you. And then I don't think most people will decide that Ovation's parking best option is in Carrier Row. I think they're going to find a better option across Cotella. And then lastly, and I talked about this at our meeting, the survey information, the one the sewer district is putting out right now, is a waste of money. It's a bunch of little, small print, no one's going to read. And in my opinion, who said we have a happy community? We have a happy community. Most of us, leave me alone, I'm good. And that's the way people approach it, until we move their cheese. And then they're irate. So I think when we communicate or when we ask for input or we provide information, there's a sales technique called hurt and rescue. I think we should say, "Traffic is going to be horrible on Los Alamo Boulevard," in big red letters, and then say, "Want to know more? Find out," or something like that. That's the only way you're going to get their attention. As long as our goal is to inform them, we're not going to. We have, and I know this sounds kind of brutal, but hurt and rescue, I think, is going to be a much more effective means of getting response, instead of hurting and rescuing them and then getting it after. Might as well just leave with it. So those are my thoughts.
You know, Randy, you're right. I'm on the sanitation district, and I've been saying for two years, they're going to dig up our two main streets. It's going to be a mess. You've heard us, and probably 10 other people have heard us. Those surveys, like you said, probably going to go nowhere. This is, they're actually giving us a chance to determine whether we want to go six hours a day or 24 hours a day. And that project could take three years under certain circumstances if they work nine to three every day. I mean, we could, you know, it's going to be a lifetime job for somebody. And as Tony brought up before, this, not getting an answer, it's not new, it's probably the most frustrating thing where we see, I remember with the hospital, Stephen Mendoza going through a list of how many meetings he had held for the hospital. And there were like 27 community outreach meetings, there were eight of these. And then the day it came to the council, 54 people showed up and stood in line to speak. So it just, nobody pays attention to the end. You saw it with the bridge over, the Seal Beach Bridge, you know, Seal Beach Boulevard at that point. Nobody knew anything till it happened. And the same thing is going to happen with the sanitation district. The day they start digging in the street, everybody's going to get excited. But up until then, you, until it hurts, unfortunately, nobody's really going to get excited enough to do anything about it. They're going to probably say, "Somebody should do something about that." But it's my favorite government expression, because I don't have a solution, but somebody else should take care of that. But, you know, I agree that going forward, we're going to have to come up with a way to reach them.
I don't want to hijack the meeting, but I do want to try to get us back on track. What can we do with the specific set of issues that we have that came out of the council meeting and your response that we can do going forward to get this to a resolution? That's what I'm hoping to hear.
So back to the council here. Shelley? No?
Hi, I'm, the wheels are churning, and I don't know if I have an answer other than the solution just needs to be consistent throughout the neighborhoods. It needs to be communicated. Surveys are a great attempt. I know when I asked staff about the logic behind the New Dutch decision, and they said that they got 11 responses back. And that prompted my snarky, "Well, we need to make decisions by common sense and not by lack of survey responses." And that was purely out of emotion because I know that I got a lot more than 11 responses when it was voted on to discontinue that program. And shame on them for not responding, but reality is, there are 177, 187 houses there, and they want the program, and why they didn't respond, I don't know. Like you say, it didn't hurt, and then all of a sudden, it's like, "Well, wait a minute, now they're going to be parking on our streets." I think it's our job to communicate with you some of the issues that we see coming down, construction or developments that are happening and how it's going to impact traffic, some of the stuff that planning sees in their purview that's going to affect traffic and parking, and kind of make this seamless, you know, planning approved this project, how's it going to affect traffic? Traffic, now you need to look at this. And it's not reactive, it's more proactive, such as planning. I mean, planning doesn't, you know, they're thinking of things six months, a year down the road, and I think traffic needs to be that way, too. And I don't think we've ever given you the tools to be that proactive. You've always been reactive towards a response or something, and I don't think that's fair for you to be able to operate inside that bubble.
So I do projects every, that's what I do. I do data every day about projects. How does it affect people? Why does it affect people? What are our processes to approach it? So what I'm hearing, I could be 100% wrong, is that I know nothing about Dutch. So when you say "common sense," in my head, I'm saying, "Well, what does she mean by common sense?" Okay? Because I'm a data person. So show me the data that affects your neighborhood, and then I can make an educated decision of how it will impact the people that live there. So that statement to me, I don't understand it. It's, because what supports it? So if I'm going to make a decision, is what you're asking for us to do in decision-making, I have to have the facts that support the request. So if there is 200 homes that are in that, and there's only two parking places per person, and if 500 people come into that neighborhood, it affects their parking, and then they have nowhere to park, then I can make a more educated decision.
Fair enough. And I think where my data was coming from was the map of Carrier Row and New Dutch. And it is, it's one continuous neighborhood, even though we have separate names for it. Howard runs, starts at Carrier Row, and it ends at New Dutch at the Navy Golf Course. So if we have a permit program in Carrier Row, it ends at Bunker Hill, well, the next street over is Bennington, and now there's not a permit program, well, Bennington is going to suffer the overflow of, because now it's free-for-all as far as parking. Same thing with Howard. One house is considered Carrier Row, and the house next door is considered New Dutch. So where does it start and stop? They're not defined separate neighborhoods like the Highlands, that's a neighborhood all by itself, and there's definite borders that separate that from any other neighborhood.
That's my question. So then we need that information. We need to know how it impacts, I mean, how it impacts. So that's all I'm asking for. I know this group, you know, they are happy to put forth whatever your request is, but give us the guidelines of how you, commonsense-wise, see that happen. That's my request.
Thanks for that input, Tony. So I'm going to go back to what I think Randy said early, you know, that we should have done, is either approve or reject, not toss it around like we did during the council meeting. So I have kind of two takeaways here, and I'm going to see, make sure that staff agrees, but the general plan, understanding, I think that is not just fair, I think it's necessary. So, you know, we're not here, you're not extensions of us in the sense that we're pulling our strings and you're the puppet, right? That's not why you're here. You're here to be independent assessments of what we have to deal with as well. And at some point, we get to be like, in the case of a planning commission, we're the appealing body, you know, the body that gets appealed to if there's a decision someone doesn't like, right? So we have the general plan, understanding, and then data-driven decisions. I totally agree with you. So what we might think of common sense in our own microcosms, if you don't have that data, you can't make the decision. I totally get that. But you can't get it from us, unfortunately. Only our little experiences, but I think I look to staff. So does that make sense, Les, that in terms of what Tony had asked? I mean, I think that's entirely fair, and we have some metrics on that. Would you agree?
Absolutely. It's just, it's difficult, as we're talking about, to get those metrics. But if I could really quick, Mary, in hearing everything, too, and my observation of the last few months of the dialogue and conversation, you know, one of my thoughts, and I know decisions are being made today during this meeting, but one of my thoughts is, maybe it's best for us to keep things status quo right now and start enforcing for a bit. Because if anything is going to get people interested and wanting to be a part of this, kind of like to Randy's point a little bit, is maybe we just need to get out there and start enforcing what we already have in place? Give that a few months' time to see what transpires and the public comment from that, and then explore possible options and opportunities. But give it a chance for a lot of those, most of our neighborhoods that have not seen the enforcement, have not, kind of dust that off, get it up and going again, and then revisit it in a few months. But I think we're going to hear from folks once we start getting out there. And some of that might be positive, and some of it may be challenging, but at least we're going to get some feedback and some dialogue with our residents.
Well, and before you enforce, this program was introduced 15 years ago. Before you enforce, you need to roll the program out again.
Yeah, we need to educate.
This is probably, in my neighborhood, probably 70% of the people that lived there weren't there in 2004. We've had a lot of turnover in Carrier Row, especially in a little bit more, probably a little bit less in New Dutch. So if you start enforcing, you're going to get an angered reaction. It's like, "I didn't even know there was a program. There was a sign there." I mean, no, you don't pay attention to the sign if there hasn't been enforcement for 15 years. So you almost, if that's the course of doing it, it's almost like introducing it as a brand-new program, because 15 years, it really is.
If I may, something that bubbled up within the commission that, and I realize there may be some cost to it, but it became clear to us that perhaps we need to think about different color permits for different areas. Because one of the things that we noticed is people over by the high school who either have moved out of the area or live in a completely different neighborhood are able to use those parking permits to park in a specific area because they're the same citywide. So we may want to consider something like that. We've got some ideas that we would like to pass along and share, that I think would help the program long-term.
Permits in Greenbrook are green.
City manager, you had something?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to mention, as and along the lines of what Councilmember Hasselbrink is mentioning and Les mentioned, the part of the education becomes the actual citation process and the warnings. I mean, there's a possibility of doing like a flyer, getting that information out, sharing it with the Traffic Commission and the city council, reintroducing it again, and then the police department doing warnings first and then citations. Because Captain Carr indicated, as the department did start enforcing a particular area, we received a lot of compliance in that area, and people that were educated just by either the warnings or the citations themselves. So that becomes a part of the education process, getting a flyer out and information first, and then probably a warning, and then the citations themselves. People do come into compliance. Captain Carr, you talk a little bit about that.
Yes, so shortly after, shortly after the New Dutch Haven Carrier Row was decided upon that we were going to keep one part, not another, we had requests that they wanted enforcement or they wanted it to be kept, is we decided to go out there and begin issuing the warnings, which is all the phone calls you received. We did the mailer, we did the request, we tried to educate people about the program. They ignored it, it went in junk trash, it went unnoticed. Warnings on people's cars gains compliance. This program is set to better the lives of our community members. So we're not here to punish our community members. If they come to us and say, "Hey, I didn't know, I've sold a car, forgot about it," even if it was a live citation, we would use common sense and most likely dismiss that citation because it would be something of quality-of-life standard. This isn't about punishing our residents, it's about making them comply with what they've requested. So those warning citations were there to educate and bring back the program. The direction given to my parking staff was go out there and issue warnings for the next three weeks. Let's see what we get. My records personnel was told, "Hey, people are going to come in in large groups wanting more information, wanting to know what to do, let's get them compliant. After that three-week period, let's begin in issuing citations." Now, based on that, people would come in and say, "Hey, I was unaware, didn't have time, work got in the way," whatever. We would take care of it until a period of three months went by, and at that point, I'd have been hard-fast to say, "It's now time to be enforcing." Carrier Row, even though the name of it butts up against New Dutch Haven, the streets are very minimal. You're talking Saratoga, Green, Langley, and Essex. It doesn't cover all of Carrier Row, covers certain streets, and that was all based It doesn't cover all of Carrier Row, covers certain streets and that was all based on one business that impacted that area. That business didn't exist for years, therefore, we didn't get calls for service, therefore, we didn't go and enforce. New Dutch Haven, no calls for service, the track has not had business in over 15 years. The parking impact wasn't there. I have zero calls for service in one year's time. So, when you talk about a neighborhood that says, hey, we need these parking signs, I have nothing to report on. Old Town West, Old Town East, I have calls. We respond to those. Our parking guys go out there and do it. We don't go into those neighborhoods because we don't want to punish the residents. So, if there's not a problem, if we don't get notified, if we're not hearing of an issue, we're not going to go bother you because it seems like things are moving smooth. That's why there was no enforcement in those areas. So, when we were asked, hey, continue this, I went in with a warning program and then I was told to stop. So, we're just trying to figure out, and it seems pretty clear now, how to educate and then how to get that compliance and get these programs going until it's time to review again.
And I think, and I'll finish real quick, the biggest offenders, especially for the west side of Carrier Row, is Howard and Lexington, which is not covered by the permit program. So, you're not going to get calls because that's not part of a permit. But you have people parking around the corners, you've got people parking and partially parking driveways, not completely blocking, but it's, so there's nothing to call because there's nothing to enforce. When the warnings came out, I was getting questions like, well, how many permits do I get? Do I get any residents or do I get any visitor permits? Well, what if I'm having a party? How can I get one-day permits because I'm having a party on Saturday? And those are all questions I couldn't answer. When it was first introduced in 2004, we were told each family gets two stickers, assuming there's two cars, and then you get two visitor placards, which I still have. You know, well, what if I have four cars? And a lot of families have four cars, they've got two kids and there's four cars, can I get more? Well, sure, because this isn't about regulating the residents, it's about regulating the non-residents. So, I think before we start issuing warnings, those questions at least need to be asked and answered. So, some people at least know those answers. I didn't know those answers, you know, how many do you get, that type of thing. So, I just want to make sure that we just don't start issuing warnings and not have any answers for some of the details.
Okay.
If I may, not to, I mean, I don't think we need to solve everything here, so I'm going to ask Chair Hill. So, does this meet the expectations which you set out when you came before us in terms of the dialogue? I know you're not going to have all the answers, but I think it's a good start. Do we need to do this again? Or do you have enough information?
I think you gave us the guidance and the guidance is, we're doing what we're supposed to do. We need to keep doing what we're doing and we all understand that the system is imperfect and do the best we can with what we have. And I think that's how we need to approach what we do and you need to accept that that's what we are doing. When you talk about things you didn't know, we did. We spent hours, weeks, months, in fact, years discussing those very items. And if you come to us, you could have gotten those answers.
Right. But so, as council, how do I come to the commission? Do I come through staff? Do I come to the commission? That's what I don't know.
Just like I came to you when we started.
True.
That could be my responsibility.
And then bringing...
And I don't know what about, if you're not my friend, then I...
Right. But then, so I get the information and then how do I share without a brown act?
The memo after the meeting, I mean, that's, you know, kind of a synopsis, a quick view.
That way you're aware.
Yeah.
Especially for items such as this one, I think it makes, you know...
So, I think, you know, if I may, so I think, Randy, sort of the conduit, I think, again, staff would be providing data and the guidance from the general plan perspective, right? Because that's, you know, we're all doing that from maybe where we sit up there. I think the memo, the summary of decisions you all made and if there is that question, we can go back through staff and get back to the chair, vice chair and ask for a little more additional information. So, again, I want to just thank you all. I think this is really good. You know, I didn't know what to expect, but I, you know, I think there's just that dialogue that, you know, we're understanding where you're coming from. We're not here to be all, at least, I don't believe we're here to be all controlling. We're here just, you know, we've chartered you to go do a certain portion of what we need to deal with up there and I just want to thank you all for doing that work. Any other comments from the council over here? Randy?
I just have one thing. You know, there's a lot of time and energy and money put forth by the commission and by the city council on these programs. And like, from our side anyway, I don't think we were clear on exactly what the goal is. And once we are clear on that, how we're going to reach that goal and then a review process to look at some, look at the situation at a certain period of time and see if we reach that.
So, if I may, just, I'll speak personally, right? As just an individual, not a member of the council here, but I think Captain Carr kind of summarized it. If we have a place that's not needing enforcement, I think the one neighborhood where it was the one business on the corner that was impacting the residents, and they were here vocal when I was sitting on the traffic commission. So, the sunset part is, if we don't need it, let's get rid of it, right? I mean, the streets are public streets, they're owned by everybody. Now, there may be that need where we haven't. And again, I'm just speaking for me, right? My neighborhood, we don't need it, I don't think, but if there were an impact, I'd be over here asking for it, petitioning my neighbors. So, I think if you use that as a guidance, if we don't need it, why do we have it? Because we put our police in a very difficult position of deciding whether or not to enforce the law and that is the last that we want to be doing. We want to give them clear direction because it comes back on them negatively, no matter what we do, so...
Is it the council and the commission saying to the residents, you need this or is it the residents saying upwards, we want this or we want this?
It's the residents.
Who has the...
But I think, I think the thing is, I would go back, again, speaking individually, if it's not justified as much as any one person may want it, you have to all look at that saying, is it justified? I think the good, let me use the term warranted, right? I mean, it's got to be, to me, again, I'm just speaking as an individual. So, I hope that helps because I don't think you want us here doing your job and certainly we don't want to be doing that too, okay? I mean, that's why you're here. All right? Is there nothing else? We'll call this adjourned to our...
We appreciate your attention and your time spent with us here today.
I appreciate that you're here and let's do this again. Next year. But seriously, unless we have to do it sooner.